Sorry, it's been a long day.
We are recording.
Thank you, we appreciate that. All right, good evening, everybody. Happy holidays. This is Mayor Marion Claus. I welcome you to the City of Clyde Hill Council meeting. On this Tuesday, December the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, we are continuing to conduct our meetings in a hybrid fashion just for continued added safety. We have trifecta going on in our community between flu, RSV, and COVID, so appreciate people's understanding. Courtney, calling us to order. How is our roll call?
All council members are present.
Outstanding. Okay, I'll ask wherever you are if you wish to stand and either have or vision a flag, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the ground. We have under our section one point one, the usual information around our revised rules for holding a hybrid meeting. If anybody not participated before, we are coming up on the non-agenda comment section, so screen, there's a little smiley face with the hand waving at you for reactions. If you would go there to raise your hand to make a comment. That's how you do it. If you can't find it, doesn't work, then just get our attention coming off mute, and we will do our best to accommodate you. Otherwise, I think we're all ready to go. We'll go ahead and then move into our approval of the agenda or ask for a revision to that. Is there such a motion? Somebody wish to make a motion to pass?
Councilmember Jones moved to accept the agenda.
Second, Muramoto.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone? Right, we can actually go through. Section three, this is an opportunity that we can have some comments from any of our residents. And anyone from the public, and for that matter, that wishes to speak to us, we ask that you state your name and just indicate if you are a resident of Clyde Hill. And in general, try to keep it around three minutes timeframe. And this is not a dialogue question answer, but our opportunity to listen to you and to take into consideration anything that you may wish to bring out. So this would be an opportunity for anyone to raise your hand or get our attention if you wish to speak. Thank you. I see Lynn's hands up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. A bit of an out of season concern and question, and it's in regard to Clyde Hill tennis courts. Which are somewhere in between private and public since they are in the Clyde Hill Park. I'm an avid player and tried to get onto the court numerous times in the summer. Came up against a lot of lessons being caught by pros being paid. I felt that waiting an hour was a long time for a singles shot at getting a court. There does not seem to be a sign up or any sort of priority for a Clyde Hill resident. So I started checking around to see what Chinook does, what Hunts Point does, what Medina does. So it's a little bit of an investigation, and it seems like not much works for anybody. That we are all up against fighting off pros teaching lessons. So I had a good back and forth with Hunts Point. Who actually would like to work with Clyde Hill if we do find sort of a a way to manage registration for courts. Medina, the same thing. They'd like to do a sign up, not quite sure how to make that happen. So I, maybe you can tell me who I could work with. I've done a fair amount of investigating and would be happy to supply sort of my written findings. But I'm not sure if that would be your planning commission, council, or public works. But it seems to be an issue, and I love tennis, and I'd love to play on our courts. So that's sort of where I was at, and it would just be really nice to walk up and play and not have to wait an hour or wonder if somebody's telling me the truth that they just got there. So, anyway, that's that.
Okay. Thank you. Now that we know your concern and your options there. We might have a couple of forums, especially with points mayors that we meet with, so we can reach out to you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Kamovic.
I just wanted to thank you for doing all that legwork. And I know that that takes a lot of time and energy, and I think you really set us up to do the right thing by residence, so thank you so much.
You are welcome, and it does seem like Medina and Hunts Point. Oddly, Yarrow sort of ignores their courts, and they were like, what court? So it's kind of a combination basketball court down there, tennis court. It looks a little bit abused. So I don't think it gets much use. And I did leave a message with Bozarts, and they apparently have a private court, and it is keyed. But I am waiting back to hear from their sort of clerk, so thank you for acknowledging.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to comment? All right, seen none. And Lynn, you can put your hand down. You just click on the same thing. There you go. You got it. All right, we will then move on with the agenda. We, nothing under section four, and now we move on to new business and discussion topics for section five. First topic is that which is the report from me and city administrator and anybody else that may wish to chime in on kind of our plans to make the improvement in our relationship between our leadership administration and police department. And that goal does remain front and center. And I feel very good about the fact that there's been a lot of listening going on over these last couple of weeks. And really trying to make sure that everybody has had the opportunity to express their concerns, either directly as it may have affected them. Or in many cases, it's in solidarity, if you will. For one of their peers that may have had something occur and really feeling strongly that, you know, that that needed to be improved upon. I we have, and we will continue to implement a variety of different tactics. And they're really going to be targeting around our culture here within all of our broad four walls. In the sense of really trying hard to be more transparent. Mindful of our communication styles in a way that we are more collaborative. Are seeking for and reaching out for input. And just being respectful of people's expertise, their time, their resourcefulness, and getting us to a a sense of kind of a functional family, if you will. And to where everybody feels like we have each other's back in that you're excited and happy to come to work and to be a part of this great environment. There are still some activities and strategies that we are ironing out. So the plan, if you will, is what I would call dynamic. Because it's, it's, we're going to be testing the water on a few things, seeing if this is going to be helpful, if not, trying something else. Other ideas are being reached out, waiting for some responses, so we are extraordinarily committed in order to try to figure out how we're going to find the right kind of process and pattern that helps us walk the top. And has all of our staff feeling like we are backing up with what our intent is hoping to accomplish. I do not believe this is something that is going to change overnight whenever you're dealing with culture changes. That seldom is something that you can accomplish, but if everybody stays to task and everyone is committed to the process and everyone comes with a positive intent and helping each other out. If things are not where they need to be, or we still have any levels of frustration, then we need to be able to call each other out on that and kind of help make sure that we are moving along. We need to have timely and efficient escalation of issues. And I hope I was really clear with everyone that I had spoken to that, you know, there has to be a safe and appropriate avenue by which that can occur. And there can be some formal and informal opportunities to continue to have access, to get answers, to get clarification. And we're just hoping that everything that has been just very, if you will, negative and foundational to kind of why we are here. That we have felt like we've acknowledged that and heard that, and that we are all in the state of mind that we're progressing to move forward. What I have in writing, because I know that is something that council has asked for, is a signed memo of commitment. Have had several sessions with a lot of the leaders, sessions with the staff. And what we are letting you know in black and white and for our community who are somewhere listening. And happy to post this on the website so we can, you know, put it out there for our community, is that we are dedicated to this cause, and we really do intend to find all the various ways that we can improve the morale, improve our transparency. Improve our trust, and ultimately the relationships that we have among and between each other. And that's to our staff, is to our residents, and obviously with you as our council. And so, again, the tactics and such are dynamics. Some have already been put into place. We're talking around competencies, we're talking about policies, we're talking about collaborative opportunities. Listening, analyzing opportunities, making sure we have decisions that we can provide rationale. And having that access and with proper escalation and resolution. So that is my report, and I'm hoping that you feel a level of support yourself. I need that from the council. And I feel very, very positive in talking with the rest of the individuals here that we are going to be headed in the right direction. All right, so comments, and I see Councilmember Moore's hands up.
Thank you. Not really a comment, more of a question. I read the memos that were submitted by councilmembers Friedman and Hakamovic, and I was expecting a little bit more content from you on the contents of those things and what you plan to do about them. Is the is the two line letter that you just showed us, the some total of what you intend to present tonight, or do you have additional, you know, response to the memos that are included in the packet?
My next step is to do a another follow up with the police department and seeking out what is going to be helpful for them for the next stages with that, if providing, if you will, you know, certainly what I heard them say. What our position or perspective on the situation is. If that's helpful, great, but a lot of this is, you know, what are, what do we intend to do about all of that? What does that all collectively say? And that is what I just got through verbally communicating to you because there are, and were key things that came out of that. And those, that is the work at hand that we need to, we need to implement in order to make the improvements in this organization. And so that's what I'm going to do, but I do intend to go back to the police. Now that they had a chance to vent, and we were talking about different strategies and to see. And also, when I asked them for ideas and strategies. It was pretty much the time spent on, these are the issues. But I had asked them to be thoughtful in what they would want and see or hear. And so that's why I say this is dynamic. We're gonna, we're gonna have, you know, a journey on this in order to get us where we need to be.
Well, just to follow up then, I don't, how long is this journey going to take? Because you had this meeting with them on November twenty first. That's coming up close to a month ago. And you just presented us with a two line letter, and you said basically that you intend to have a dialogue, and everybody's committed to getting to a kumbaya place. I'm paraphrasing, but that's kind of what I heard.
Well, then you missed the other question in between where I said we have
Excuse me, I'm not finished, Mayor. Please don't interrupt, okay? No, I just, I mean, I would really be personally, because I wasn't part, I wasn't in those meetings, you know, I just read the memos, I've heard a few things, but from your perspective, what did, what did you take away from the meeting that you had with the police on the twenty first? What was your takeaway about their concerns and what they wanted to see happen?
I, okay, so let me just rephrase what I said. They would like to have a, an environment where we are transparent. Where if they brought forth issues or concerns, that things were escalated and addressed and resolved in a timely fashion. If there were decisions to be made, that there would be clarity, clarification, perhaps rationale as to what is going to be done or not done. They wanted to make sure that policies were up to date and current, and those administering to them are up to date and current as well. And that general levels of communication is more in a very collaborative fashion. So those are where different approaches and how we communicate formally, how we communicate informally. And how we address issues that are coming up in the moment. And that is, again, like I said, walking the talk and, and showing them and demonstrating to them where we are at. Anything further, Councilmember Moore?
Now I see Councilman Friedman has his hand up, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you had, okay, Councilmember Friedman?
Well, I think we have to go back and talk about some of the background in order that we can have a more constructive discussion and maybe impossible action. And, and I think we need to have this discussion because I think the residents have been clear on how important public safety is in the community. We have dedicated professionals at the Clyde Hill Police Department. They have expressed their concerns. And our residents here in Clyde Hill have a right to, to feel safe and to feel protected. And if you recall last month, I said that the issues from the exit interview and from the letter from the police union representing Clyde Hill Police Officers are significant, and they are of concern to the community, and we've, we've waited a lot longer than since your recent meetings. We've waited months for acknowledgement and action from the administration, and we've had responses such as disparaging a former police officer or sending a letter with counter allegations directed, directed at the union. And those are disappointing, and they don't really facilitate confidence or trust, which is the real issue. And that limits the ability to take positive action. You know, as a, as a councilman, a council member, and as council members, you know, we're fiduciaries to the community, and we can make laws and we can set policies by enacting ordinances and as, and resolutions as well as enacting and improving a budget. But the council provides oversight, and the administration is responsible for the daily operations. So if you look at this, the issues between the administration leadership and the police officers are significant. And your comments don't, don't give me the trust that you are, that you really see the significance of this. You're, there's, there's nothing, there's no concrete comments there. And as, and I think as we're learning, a plan and a real plan in progress is really lacking. And now I worry this issue has spread well beyond the police officers to other members of the staff. And this is, and to me, it is irresponsible to allow this problem to persist without some action. So I'm going to offer the following motion. It is the opinion of the city council that the mayor is not serving the community's needs. With this motion, we express a vote of no confidence in the mayor, and we call on the mayor to resign. And now all of you and the council know that I, how I feel about consensus, and to me, I want to have a conversation. I want to hear from you. And I'm certainly opening to amending this motion. That's my statement.
I, okay, I'll press this through. Councilmember Jones?
Okay, I, of course, am new to this motion. And I know
So I'm sorry, point of order, I mean, if there's a motion, don't we need to see if there's a second? And I don't think we can just skip over it, can we? Maybe, I don't, I don't, I honestly don't know. I'm asking, maybe Attorney Brubaker can address that.
Well, I guess I need to ask Mr. Councilmember Friedman to be. You, you said you were going to make the motion, then you said that's my statement at the end, so was it a statement or was it a motion? If it was a motion, it needs a second, and then it can be discussed.
Yeah, it was a motion, and I'm glad to read it again if you would like. Would it be helpful if I did that?
Do you need Councilmember Friedman to read it again?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Okay. It is the opinion of the city council that the mayor is not serving the community's needs. With this motion, we express a vote of no confidence in the mayor and call on the mayor to resign.
That is the motion. Is there a second? Not hearing or seeing a second, the motion will not
Second, second.
I'm sorry, not see that. It has been seconded by Councilmember Kamovic. Discussion.
Okay, I've still got my hand raised.
Okay.
I mean, again, as I was saying before, this is a serious motion, and I I know we have issues. But I also know there's a lot going on in our town business beyond this particular issue. I don't have enough information at hand to want to vote for supporting this council action. And I guess for one thing, I will say I I feel that I have not investigated this as much as I need to this particular topic, and I want to do that, I will do that, and that may inform the future position on this, but I'm not going to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kamovic.
Typically after a motion, a second, I think that the person who made the motion gets quote unquote first crack. We are where we are. I'm not sure, Councilmember Friedman, if you have more to say before we consider this.
I'm, I'm glad to speak, and I'm also glad to hear from everybody else, of course. The my concern involves public safety and a healthy, functioning executive branch. And I think it's been well documented that there is a lack of trust between the administrators, administrative, administration leadership and the police. And it's unhealthy for residents, and it's unhealthy for the individuals involved. And as I said, this issue has been ongoing for months. It came up months ago, it was brought up as an issue. It's been ignored, or attempted, or there's been an attempt to just kind of let time linger, and this this has only made the problem worse. What I've heard right now is, is Mayor, I'm still not hearing where the problem exists, which is among leadership. You're talking about listening and everybody being honest and truthful. The point is, there's a lack of trust in the, in the administration and in the leadership, and that starts with you, Mayor, and I, I I make this motion on the basis, the fact that we have not made progress in this issue. And the, I don't have, I don't have the power to enact it. I only have the power to make a statement. And that's kind of where we stand on this, and I feel like it's in, it's there's nothing more important than making sure that the public feels protected and safe. I think this is a dangerous time. We have a wonderful police department. They are, they attempt to be as responsible as possible, but I don't hear from them. It worries me that issues such as retention and job satisfaction are impacted by this, and that impacts the community. I, while I agree with you, this takes time. It really has to start right at the top, and the top can lead the way down and work their way through this. But, and, and what concerns me the most is that there are some other, there are other issues that have, that affect the trust. Shredding of the document. As he did with the memo concerning the behavior of the city administrator and to Officer Fernandez, was that, that was inappropriate, and it was unethical. Adding, adding to this, you know, we have a personnel file related to the city administrator related to the same issue that gets updated two years later. It, it just, it's it's trying to run from a problem when you need to confront it right up front at the beginning, and we have to have trust that you're doing this the right way, and I don't feel it that now. So I'll let, I'll let others speak to the extent necessary.
Councilmember Kamovic.
Um, I'm, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions before offering thoughts, because I'm still putting thoughts together. The document that you put up with the signatures. I have a question. I'm hoping you can help me understand the, the significance of that document or what it means, because I read it as best as I could, and I'm not sure if you were concerned about the commitment of the chief and the lieutenant before, and this somehow addresses a problem. Asking because I don't think that the council had any concerns or issues around the chief or lieutenant. And I don't, I haven't heard anything articulated by the, by police officers, so I'm, I'm not sure what I should take away from this or what the community should take away from this.
Would you like me to respond?
Sure.
Okay. To make the changes that we need to do among and between our staff and our leaders, me obviously at the top. We need all hands on deck and everybody contributing and doing what we can in order for us to achieve the goals. So for example, we need anything that might be an issue that someone has, making sure that they're bringing it up to the right individuals, so that we know about it and we can address it. We need the leaders making sure that they're escalating and taking care of things with an open mind and, and an open attitude. I have talked with the leaders. We have had some conversations with this. And we are all in together in order to make the necessary changes in what we do and how we do it and how we communicate. And the intent of this letter was to communicate to everybody that we, we are committed, we are dedicated, we're all in to make the necessary improvements. And the specifics of what they are, again, some of which have been implemented. I find that you are wanting and needing some level of, here's what we've done. Uh, I find that you are wanting and needing some level of here's what we've done, X, what we've done in order to have some assurance that things are getting done. That is a level of information that, um, has not normally been conducted that way. And so I have chosen to kind of verbally give you that sense. Um, we have, and you will recall, have gone into closed sessions on some of these topics. So it's not as if you're not aware of the, the facts behind some of the actions. And, you know, obviously we have to be careful on public disclosure on that here. So I, this is our leadership attestation that we are individually and collectively working together on this, on this issue. And I have felt very good about the meetings and the discussions that we've had to date, including the chief and the lieutenant. And of course, as you know, they have the direct line of sight and line of ears with their officers. I have heard positive comments since I have done the listening rounds, both directly from staff as well as from leaders. So I feel like it isn't just a kumbaya and not making any impact. This is that cultural shift change that needs to happen.
Thank you. Um, you said that there's, uh, there's been, uh, changes put into place. What, what changes have been put into place?
As an example, we were asked to make sure that our policies are current and reflective of code and practices. If, and you obviously have been talking and the memos reflect that with the officers. There has been concerns, making sure that we can administrate and enact according to codes. And so we have gone back and made sure that we are putting ourselves into those courses and pulling up those resources and asking the effort, experts so that can make sure that what we are putting into our policies and expecting to administrate to is current and accurate.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just have one or two other questions. After all the conversations and listening, are there any key problems that you've identified from those conversations that you can articulate to the community and to the council?
I, the main issues that were brought up were from the fairly recent past and they were heartfelt and everybody uh, knew about them and they all agreed to the concerns about that. That is, the, the positive thing about our, our police force is that, and they will call it as such, they're a band of brothers. Uh, something happens or affects one of them, it affects all of them. And that was definitely, um, uh, palpable when we had those discussions. So the few issues around HR, um, that had come up, um, that again, had been resolved, but the process around it was very awkward and very concerning. And that's where they all kind of wanted to make sure we knew about that. Um, that, that points again to what I just said, making sure that we do have current policies and that we are implementing those and administering to those that they're the most current and accurate. And that we have resources that we can touch base and reach out to, uh, if we need to update anything in the moment for a new event or a new issue that has cropped up. Um, and so it, it wasn't so much right now, right this, but a, a lot of this was unfortunately pulling the Band-Aid off a very old wound um, that really had unresolved, um, emotions, uh, around. And I think their ability to communicate it and to express it was very important for them.
Okay, thank you. I just have one, one last question and it's, um, I, it's related to HR, so I think I need to direct this to Lisa. Um, did a city employee, Lisa, uh, attempt to file a complaint of harassment? Um, that was in effect turned away and not taken.
Not to the best of my knowledge, no. Can you be more specific? Um, because I don't believe that I'm aware of the complaint that you're referring to.
Okay, um, y- you know, it's, um, uh, no, I, I don't have more specific that I'd, I'd share. I'll say that that is, um, candidly, the, the opposite of what two folks on staff, uh, confided in, um, a couple of council members. So with that, I'm, I'm gonna lower my hand to give someone else a chance and, uh, pull some notes together. Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the other council members. Councilmember Moore.
Sorry, I have one, one specific question for you, mayor, just based on these reports. Um, it, in, in one of these, it says that in the, uh, November 21st meeting, uh, you were accused directly by the police of lying. Uh, and I just want to know, do you assert that that's untrue, that you did not lie to the police? Or, or, you know, if you do, if, I guess if you do agree to that, do you apologize for it? I mean, I kind of want to know, you know, you've been accused by sworn law enforcement officers of lying, apparently. That's according to this memo that we have in the packet. And I want to hear from you on whether you lied to the police or there's a misunderstanding. And, you know, how you kind of feel about that whole situation because that, that troubles me. Thank you.
That incident is related, and Tom, help me if I'm overstepping any boundaries here. But, um, that incident was related to a police report. And it was brought to my attention. It was something that I was aware of, had already addressed, and it was taken care of. That report that was given to me was a copy of the original. And I, as I always do when it's handed to me, I usually fold it up and put it with my belongings. I really try hard not to bring home any public record material. Um, and it is not a requirement that I take at home, not a requirement that I have done anything with that. Um, and what I tend to do when it talks about being shredded is I usually walk over here and make sure it's safely put into the secured shredding bin. So it's not lying around and not in inappropriate, uh, places. I don't have an office in case there's anybody here that doesn't realize what's going on behind the other, at the counter. But there is no separate mayor office, there is no separate mayor desk, um, that sort of stuff. And I just prefer not to carry those documents anywhere. If something needs to come up with that, we know where the original is at. I did consult with our legal because they were accusing me of being unethical. And, uh, I thought I was clear at the time and I wanted to verify with our, our legal. And Tom has assured me that I have not done anything wrong by taking that document and putting it safely in the secure shredding bin. Um, and so I stand by the fact that I was not unethical and I did not lie to them. And that I, uh, my response to that was, and you will recall, because we've had discussions on this, that it was addressed in the moment. Let me make sure others have an opportunity first here, councilman. Yes, member Ramonoto, do you wish to say anything? Otherwise I'll go back to.
Um, I, I'm, I'm sad this is, it is where we are. I will not put Chief Kohler on the spot. But, um, what, the, the observation that I have is that we have really not heard a lot from the chief or lieutenant Hanson. And I, and, and chief, I'm not putting you on the spot because I understand, um, this is your boss. And, um, so you, you know, I, I don't want to compromise your position. Um, that's, that, that's comment number one. Uh, comment number two is that, um, I, you know, as I read the memo and I'm not trying to read too much into it, but it said the leadership. Um, I, I would think that the leadership would also include the council. And the fact that the council was not signatures to the document is a little bit, yeah, not disconcerting, but it's sad, um, that we aren't all party to the solution. Because, um, you, you know, it's, it's a systemic problem to the city. And, and as, as Councilman Friedman stated and Councilman Huck Moji stated, I mean, we are a community of safety and, and trust. And, um, I, I think that there's a lot of, of breach, perceived breach that has gone on. And it saddens me that we're at, at this point. Uh, and the fact that, you know, that this is a bit of, of, of a council versus administration is very disconcerting. And the fact that we aren't part of the solution, um, and, and continue to be in rather an adversarial position is a, a bit disconcerting. The third thing I would like to say is that, um, as council, um, I would remind you that we can make a motion. Um, uh, but it's, it's not, I mean, it's not binding, right? So, so it's not like, uh, isn't this like the UK parliament where a vote of non-confidence is going to mean that the mayor absolutely has to resign. Um, so I would just like to bring that up to the council. Thank you. I'm done.
I guess Chief Colleen, I don't know if you are comfortable or wish to make any statement.
Um, I, I guess like what the mayor has stated is there, there have been obviously identified problems. You know, I know it, it does take time to, to, to build back the trust. Um, she, she has asked to speak again at, uh, we have a two training days coming up next week. One is in-house training, defensive tactics, firearms and whatnot, legal updates. Um, and she has asked to speak at that to maybe after everybody's had an opportunity to marinate after the last meeting. Um, we'll see, partly because this was a union issue. Um, I have not tried to get too involved in talking to them about it because I don't want to be seen as in, um, interfering in a union issue, so. That's where I'm at at the moment.
And I would only say, council member Ramonoto, that, um, I, I think I have been on record seeking, um, support and help from council as an entity, um, uh, to help through this. And it was made extraordinarily clear that I'm the mayor, I'm the CEO, which I am, and that I am to blame, in your guys' words, and that it's up to me to make sure that I find the solutions. And I am very much working on it. There are certain tactics that I'm still in discussions and trying to iron out that I really will need council's direct assistance and help with as we move forward. And so I, I will take you up on the, the sentiment and the offer because, um, I can tell you that there have been other comments made where staff is tired. They're tired of the discord between legislative branch and administrative branch. That, you know, comments, simple comments like, why can't they all just get, get along? Those sorts of comments. So I think as much as we can work on that ourselves in our development and relationship building, that will help us and I think it will radiate to the rest of, of, of the police and, and city hall staff. So I look forward to that as well. Councilmember Komovich.
Thank you. Um, I, uh, don't have as good or as clear a statement as what council member Friedman has presented. I, I've tried to put something together on the fly. Um, I want to start at the queen bee. Um, in terms of going there and having conversations with residents and, and what I pick up on from, from those conversations. I want to acknowledge the frustration that many residents have articulated to me about how hard it is to understand what's going on in our city government. Um, it's way more easy to stay up to date on Ukraine or US-centered elections on the East Coast than it is to get informed about Clyde Hill's administration. Um, without clarity or context on what's been going on, a call for the mayor to resign, um, non-binding, council member Ramonoto, it's, it's, it's a, it would be an expression of opinion. Um, a call for the mayor to resign might seem like an extreme solution, uh, to problems that, uh, no one told them about. So, uh, before we vote, I want to, I want to try to make clear to anyone from the public here in Clyde Hill, how we got here. Um, I think the first part is there is a problem. Um, the council, Clyde Hill Police and the mayor have all acknowledged different parts of the problem on the public record, uh, over the last year. So there's no doubt that there is a problem. Um, the next thing is that the problem involves trust. Uh, councilor Ramonoto, I think you nailed it. Right? You, you talked about it in, in some ways. I want to talk about it in slightly different ways. Um, we have a serious trust problem between the administration and Clyde Hill Police. And that problem directly threatens our community safety and the responsibility for that. The, the responsibility for safety falls on the administration. The council does not do daily operational anything. We do policy and, and, and budgets. So there's a serious trust problem between the administration and Clyde Hill Police. Um, I'll say, at, at least from my point of view and a handful of conversations I've had over the last year, there's a serious trust problem between, uh, the administration and council as well. And as council member Friedman has said, I, I don't think i- it's, this problem, I think, is not at all limited, um, to the, the mayor and, and the police. To the community in response to asking, what's the evidence of problems? Uh, I'd just point at our meeting packet. We have two summary documents that walk through evidence of problems. Councilmember Moore has referred to, to a few details there. We have a September exit interview with the departing Clyde Hill Police Officer indicating a clear lack of trust in the administration. There's an October letter from the union that represents uh, Clyde Hill Police Officers that documents and sharply criticizes the mayor and city administrator. We have comments from the Chair of the Civil Service Commission around the depth and breadth of the problems we have. Uh, and we have a recap of what officers who met with the mayor related to council members. Um, out of concern, I think that the mayor wouldn't represent what they said to her. And at this point, I understand that, that concern. Um, I think it would be reasonable for residents to expect after September and October and November that the mayor would report back with a statement of problems and a plan to address them. And as council member Friedman has pointed out, this evening's report out does not do that. Um, to date, the mayor has delayed, for example, waiting on a written report from the exit interview after a public discussion. And her administration, um, has attempted to shift blame. Uh, for example, trying to characterize the departing police officer as, as disgruntled. Uh, you know, mayor, you, you made a comment about, um, you know, asking for help and, and not getting any help. I, I, you seem to be asking for help in addressing problems that you don't believe exist and don't acknowledge. So I, I don't know how to help, I, I don't know how to support, much less actively help people who don't acknowledge a problem. Um, the, the mayor and administration's problems with Clyde Hill Police uh, resemble problems we've already worked through and worked around over the last year. Uh, code enforcement and legal representation. On code enforcement, we had multiple meetings. Uh, the mayor wrote a memo in June saying the council thinks there's a code enforcement problem. And as mayor, let me tell you, there is no problem. And I'm glad in the last few weeks, the, uh, administration staff has actually started to make progress. You know, sorry, publicly demonstrated, making a lot of progress on the problem. We have an updated website with all sorts of better and clearer information around enforcement and compliance. And so clearly there was a problem. It just took us a year to work through it. Um, the city's legal representation is another great example of a problem. And I'm, you know, my, I, council member Moore, um, is more senior to me. I'm sure he'll have, uh, I, I, I defer to him to, to explain that because he, he started on that one well before I did. The, the motion that council member Friedman brings in front of us now reflects, I think, two factors. The first that he's been very clear about is the importance to the community of public safety. And the other factor it reflects is the experience. And the other factor it reflects is the experience that the five of us have as a council working with leaders who are challenged to acknowledge, much less address, problems. Clyde Hill residents, including the council, we live here, and city staff, including the police, share a goal. Our common goal is competent, effective, trustworthy city government. When I voted for the mayor, I, along with all the other Clyde Hill residents who voted for her, entrusted her to deliver on that goal, competent, effective, trustworthy city government. I follow Councilmember Maroto on this. I wish we didn't have to have this conversation. But but here we are. And I'm going to refer to what Councilmember Friedman finished with, which is, should we have a reason, like, should we trust that you're you're doing the right things, the right way to address this abundantly well-documented problem? And and there is just such a such a palpable lack of of substance and acknowledgement that that, no, I I I don't have that trust. Thank you. Sorry for going on this long. With more time, I could have made that shorter. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Mark. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I was just going to say I'm noticing the clock and and on the first item or item on the agenda, I think we need to maybe move on if there's not more comments. I would I would actually like to propose an amendment, though, to Councilman Friedman's motion. And 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 the context for this is that we are currently five months away from the filing deadline for the next election, next city elections. And so we're 11 months away from the actual election for the mayor in the city of Clyde Hill. And since the resolution that was brought forward didn't pass, that, you know, it's likely that the election for mayor and the two council seats is going to happen as as previously planned. So in my opinion, calling for the mayor to resign at this point, first of all, I don't think he's going to do it, and and I don't think it's necessary since we're, you know, pretty close to an election as it is. I also think just from a practical standpoint or a political standpoint, it might make it difficult for some people on the council to support that, you know, because there's a little bit of potential conflict of interest. So my my proposal is just to strike the the wording about that she should resign, but to maintain the wording about no confidence.
There is an amended motion on the table. Is there a second? I am.
I will I will second so that we can at least have this this conversation.
All right. So it's been seconded. Is there a discussion on that amendment?
I'm going to raise my hand. With respect to that amendment, I think if that is the consensus of the council, then I think that is. I mean, as I said, I'm open to an amendment and to changing, to amending my motion to the extent the council as a group agrees. And 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 Councilmember Moore, you make sense. So I I can, I would support that amendment if the rest of the group is in agreement.
Councilmember Kamovich.
I can never remember the right words for having the vote go from council one slowly and one by one through council five, but I'm going to ask for that for the vote on this motion.
Thank you. Let's see, I guess my mic's on. Well, since we're still, I still got a couple of minutes of comment. I think I share Councilmember Maroto's comment that this is a sad situation we're at. Clearly, things have to be done. I just don't want to spend the next five months having no confidence stated in my chair and not work to try to improve things within the city execution here, whether it's helping resolve and understand what's going on with the police. In this particular case, the staff, the just the day-to-day workings. And it's still important to me that the council and administration work together in the the business of running the city of Clyde Hill. And I I just, I think it's difficult for me to do that if I take a position like this. So I I'm not going to, I'm not going to say anymore. I'm going to just wait till my turn comes up to vote.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes. I wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Jones's statement. I respect. I had not thought about it that way. What you're saying makes sense to me. What I thought when I heard the statement is that no confidence is a statement about confidence. It's not a statement about willingness to work with or a statement about giving up or a statement around not trying to make things better. It's 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 an attempt to report an expectation or 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 historically what we've experienced to date. At the same time, I understand how you're interpreting it, and I wanted to thank you for making that clear. Thank you.
Councilmember Mark.
Yeah, I think what I would say is that in my personal experience, as well as what I've observed in the council in the last few months, as well as what I've heard from police members of the police department directly and other staff members and through those memos and stuff like that. I think it's fair to say there is a lack of confidence in this administration. And the thing that bothers me the most about it is a sense that there's not there's not really an honest reckoning with it because I believe that, like, we all make mistakes. Everybody here is human and has screwed up in one way or another, probably a lot more than we all want to even admit. But the only way that you're going to fix something is if you acknowledge that you have a problem, you know, that there's something wrong. And the reason I'm going to vote for this motion is because I have not, I have failed to hear either the mayor or the city administrator really ever acknowledge that they have caused problems or have behaved in ways that maybe they shouldn't have, or to say, I'm sorry that, you know, this that this happened, or that I gave somebody this impression of it, you know, like, none of that. Okay? And so you know, just just at a very basic sort of human level, if you're going to have trust in in other people, which is absolutely critical in government and company and almost any human organization, family, you better have trust. Then you're going to have to have honesty. And right now, we do not, we have a lack of honesty. And I think that is just crystal clear, in my opinion. This isn't just somebody with a, you know, an axe to grind or a disgruntled employee or anything else. This this is a pattern that's been well-established over a long period of time and has been testified to by a number of people who really seem trustworthy than me. So I think from that standpoint, to address Councilmember Jones's point, I fully agree with you. That's one reason why I want to back off from saying, let's, you know, to demand that she resign. But if we express a lack of confidence, maybe that will get the attention of this administration to change their behavior. You know, not just us, but the police department and everybody else. So that's that's why I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Councilmember Friedman.
You know, I I mentioned earlier, this problem, especially with respect to the police department, has been been known for a long time. And it's, I recall meeting with you, Mayor, and telling you about the problem. And that was done in a constructive and open manner to try to bring an issue to you that I don't know how council outside of what we're trying to do is make the point can help, can do for you. There was certainly an interest in trying to work with you, and I'm not really sure where you've asked for our help subsequent to that. There's a lot of talent on the the council. They're smart. They're experienced. We we generally work in a consensus then as a group because we can, when it's, when these issues come up and we talk about them in council, we come to the to good decisions. I'm getting good comments tonight in this discussion, and I appreciate them. And that's kind of the purpose of this. I wanted to have a constructive discussion, and I think we're starting to have it. I don't think there's anyone, you know, you it's, we've been brought in, involved in several committees recently, that one being enforcement, another being the budget committees that we've worked on. And I think as a council, we've had a lot of impact to getting these things improved and done and accomplished. And that just, we can't help here, too. But that, I agree with Councilmember Moore. That requires acknowledgement and reaching out and and time. And it's it it's like a Vulcan mind meld. You got to change your behavior and the way you think about things. So.
All right. Let me see, Councilmember Jones.
I think Councilmember Moore has helped me kind of address my my thoughts here in the sense that it, to me, it's not black and white, no confidence. His statement is a good one. There's clearly a lack of confidence. I've got that, particularly in the police area and maybe staff and but I see other areas that I think I I have confidence in. And I just can't, I can't make a no confidence statement. I could make a lack of confidence statement, and I just add that. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to see what you guys can round out so we can vote on this. Say, Councilmember Kamovich.
Inspired by Councilmember Jones, I want to offer another amendment so we can build our stack. The stack would modify Councilmember Friedman's statement of, look at my notes, instead of expressing a vote of no confidence, expressing a lack of confidence in the mayor. And before I put that out, Councilmember Jones, is that, does that address the the concern you have? Or do you want another or different edit?
I I think that's adequate. It doesn't define where it is, but it isn't as black and white as no confidence. I could accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I move to amend the statement from no confidence to a lack of confidence.
Further discussion on that? Okay, we will vote on that. All those in favor of changing this to a vote
How do we? I'm sorry, how do we do the one?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll go one by one. Thank you. Councilmember Friedman.
Excuse me. Are we, which which?
Yeah, I think we need to read it.
We should.
Yeah, I think we need to read the amended motion, please.
Yeah, the, well, this actually should be done in stages.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I will withdraw the motion.
So do you want me to take this one, Tom? No, it's fine. This this one is
You have a motion and a second. The the most recent amendment is a motion and a second to change no confidence to lack of confidence. That that should be voted on. Then there should be a vote on removing the asking the mayor to resign or calling for the mayor to resign. And then when that's done, you should vote on the main motion.
Yes.
Pardon me for having weak voice.
I'm with you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
I want to seek your vote on changing the original language to lack, to lack of of confidence. Councilmember Friedman.
Hi.
Councilmember Moore.
Hi.
Councilmember Maroto.
Hi.
Councilmember Jones.
Hi.
And Councilmember Kamovich.
Hi.
All right, that passes unanimously. Next, we, it's already been motioned and seconded with discussion. And so we're now amending the language to remove the requirement to resign. Councilmember Friedman.
Hi.
Councilmember Moore.
Hi.
Councilmember Maroto.
Hi.
Councilmember Jones.
Hi.
Councilmember Kamovich.
Hi.
So now the motion on the table, help me out, Tom, is basically going to say that the council makes a motion of a lack of confidence in the mayor.
Yes, essentially, that's that's correct, essentially. Councilmember Friedman might want to rephrase it consistent with the amendments.
I could propose wishes to express a lack of confidence in the mayor's performance of her duties. The council resolves or wishes to express that's just a suggestion that's up to you, Steve.
Right, Steve, it's yours.
It it wouldn't be appropriate to change your motion just to clarify it because you made it based on
I know, I'm I'm looking at it right now. And I'm just trying, I'm trying to wordsmith it as we think about it to to express that. It is the opinion of the city council that we express a vote, a lack of confidence in the mayor's performance. That would be it.
So then I'll go one by one to vote for that. Councilmember Friedman.
Hi.
Councilmember Moore.
Hi.
Councilmember Maroto.
Hi.
Councilmember Jones.
Hi.
And Councilmember Kamovich.
Hi.
All right, that final motion has passed. We are done with section 5.1. And I'm hoping then we can, do I need to give everybody a five-minute bio break? And then we dive into the meat of our, the rest of our meeting. That be okay?
Yeah, that'd be great, please.
Yes, please.
Let's do 8:15, come back. It'll be seven minutes bio break.
Steve, you might want to flip camera.
Yeah, I like the.
What do you look?
I like the pictures.
I like the picture for sure.
How did I do that? Let's see, you got my.
Oh, ask Ken. He's really good at team support.
Got my granddaughter. Ah, now you're stuck with me.
Kim, you're muted. And you're in Tron.
No, actually, this is this is my this is my newly thing. Snowflake thing, but oh, I got the blur background on. Okay, so I'm not. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll quit doing that now.
All right, Steve. Councilmember Moore, are you back?
Uh. He appears muted. We don't know if he's back.
Thank you. So we restart. Councilmember Moore, are you back? Just want to make sure before we restart that we connected with you. Counsel, would you like to proceed and we'll just check back in? Still have a forum.
I'll refer you in a minute.
Very good. Okay, you got it. Okay, thanks, everybody. We're going to continue on with our agenda. I've asked the speakers to try to be as concise as they can. Uh, because I'm aware of the time. And so we have five point two. And this is our comp plan. You have a memo with some attachments, Dean Rola. What we'd like to emphasize.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, it had been a while since we had updated uh council on the comp plan and its progress. And so we thought we'd put together a a memo to kind of bring everybody up to date. Um, that last was a little lengthy, so I will try and just. Wanted to point out a few of the key highlights of it. Uh, one is that we have um. Making some revisions to our grant application for resubmission. And that our first key deadline for the grant uh reimbursement process. Had to do with uh submitting our uh periodic review checklist. And that was actually delivered to Department of Commerce last Friday, so we're good to go there. Uh, we spent consist considerable time on our existing conditions report. Which, uh, as Mr. Jensen likes to call it, you have to look backward at the two thousand and fifteen report to look forward to the two thousand and twenty four report. What worked then and what doesn't work now? Um, and so that uh work will resume in January. And then one of the other reasons I really wanted to make sure that you got this was uh so that we could uh. The the visioning, we've seen the visioning, we did the the uh multiple exercises over the summer with council and planning commission and brought it back again in September. And uh, we've done some further work on it and uh we had attached the the most recent draft of the vision. Uh, to this this document and uh so that you would have it. And if anybody had any questions or thoughts on it, uh, we can either have some discussion now. Or I just wanted to emphasize to uh certainly reach out to me if you had some suggestions for. For things to uh to make changes or anything. So. That was the the short version of. The comp plan update and I see a hand, Mr. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Um. There were several areas of the code that were going to be prioritized in this review, and I don't remember seeing an update to that work stream. Can you tell us where that's at? And is there anything we can look at in terms of? Proposed amendments to uh sections of code and that kind of thing? Like, what's the timeline for that? When are we going to see stuff like that?
So we've been we've been working on, yes. So last summer, we knocked the. Uh, seven or eight items down to five. The the first one that was on that list of priorities was that permanent supportive transitional housing. And uh, I wasn't at the last council meeting, but that one was brought uh to you guys at that last meeting. Um, I don't believe we it was just as a presentation. Uh, that was the first item. Uh, we were going to, we've been kind of trying to see, we were working to schedule. Another meeting with the committee, the land use committee, to kind of discuss. Uh, thoughts on whether we wanted to actually continue to pursue that one. Uh, there was a lot of work that Medina has already done all the work and a lot of it was going to be. Uh, using learning from what they uh experienced and what they put together and to uh. Uh, utilize that and try and. Put that into our code if 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 we so desired. So. This was a particular point in time in the comp plan process where we had a little bit of. A time, a little bit of time. And we had, that's why that permanent supportive transitional housing uh code had been set for this particular time. We had four more items and remembering them off the top of my head, sightlines. Not necessarily in any order, sightlines. Uh, a piece of one particular section of code enforcement. And uh, two others. Help me out, Sean, if you've got them, sightlines.
I believe it was substantial remodel threshold, I think, was one of them. Did you say that already?
Yep, no, I didn't. That was one.
I think the last.
I'm sorry.
The last, the last one was just like definitions.
Definitely. Okay, that's right. Yep, thank you. Thanks, Mary. Uh, and so uh, I believe Mary was trying to put together another meeting of the land use committee. It looked like that wasn't going to be able to happen until after the holidays, though. Uh, so that's where that is. Those are outside of the. This was actually on the camp comp plan, comprehensive plan process. Your question was more related to those specific five areas that we had prioritized. Uh, to look at uh small sections of making improvements to the code there, land use code.
I'm still, I'm still confused. I, yeah, I my memory of that was there were. Five pretty good sized chunks of our municipal code. That we're going to be looked at uh as part of the comprehensive plan update. And I thought the comprehensive plan update was due like within the next twelve months. Maybe I'm wrong about that. Uh, and I know it's a multi-year process and I don't think we've gotten an update. On any of the work that's been done against those five areas. So that's that's what I'm getting at. I'm I'm a little vague on it myself. I just saw this on here and I'm not, I'm not understanding where we're at in terms of the the overall process.
That's that's fair. Uh, if it's possible, we'll have that meeting prior to the January, is it tenth uh council meeting? And so that we could uh hopefully have some kind of an update. Yeah, January tenth.
That'd be fine. Yeah, January tenth would be great to get an update at the next council.
Yeah, why don't we list all all five of those and then kind of give a status report um and or when it was presented back? That would be good.
Sure, I mean, if if any of the members of the of that land use committee. Kamovich or Friedman wants to have comments on that, that certainly welcome because we have been making some progress on those things.
Okay, so Councilmember Friedman.
Well, I got to admit, I'm completely confused by what they're doing and what the what the plan is. And the the memo didn't really help me here. I would. Assume, and I I thought I recall the blue line had provided. Uh, you know, kind of a project plan so we could see the steps and where we were going on this towards its completion. That would be helpful. It would give me some sense of of where we are. I think we're, this makes it sound like we're bouncing around. I don't think that's your intention.
No, yeah, sorry. That well, remember, that's kind of two separate, parallel paths that we were working on. One was those title sections of Title seventeen and the other was the actual comprehensive plan itself. And the.
That's. Dean, that's not what I. My, that's not what I'm trying to get at. I I'm confused by what we're doing on the comprehensive plan. I can't. This doesn't tell me that we're making progress or where we're where we're going with it yet. Because I think it's about, I I think Blue Line laid out a much broader plan for us and we should. I. I I think a general up project plan update would be would be a way for me. To get my hands around that we're making progress and what you're doing. It would make it a lot easier for you to explain it to us as well. And that that's this, I'm I'm actually, this confused me and I it's because I don't I don't really get the plan at the top of my head. So.
Understood. The uh, the cop plan, Blue Line will resume work, working with Eric on. The actual comp plan itself, starting in January again. Uh, one of the items that they're working on is updating the work schedule because I believe we had some kind of a chart. That spelled out the milestones and different uh things that we were trying to get to in the whole cockpit cop. Cop plan process.
Right. So I think that would really be helpful. They may need to recalibrate a few things. And that way we can bring back so we can kind of know what is the the plotted plan for twenty twenty three. Uh, so we can make sure we hit those milestones and then augmenting then with the additional work uh on those five topic areas.
Right.
Let's remember.
I I want to pile on with both councilmembers, more and councilmember uh Friedman. I'm really confused about what the comp plan plan is. Um, by last count, there were three different versions of what we thought we were going to get done in two thousand and twenty two. Uh, actually, Councilmember Jones walked me through this. Um, I think back in spring. Or fall, I really can't remember. Um, where like there was one plan and then it was modified and we're on the third one. And when you come back in January to say, here's what the the plan is for the comp plan, I have one request. So that we can learn from the past. I'd really like to know what the administration planned and expected to get done in two thousand and twenty two versus what we actually got done in two thousand and twenty two. And I think that's part of what Councilmember Moore was was asking for. And I think it would really help us understand because the the expectations kept shifting and moving and the scope kept changing. And it would be great to get clear around the two thousand and twenty two plan versus expectations. I'm sorry, expectations versus actual. And then to understand what we're trying to do in two thousand and twenty three. Thank you.
All right, makes sense.
Got it.
All right, any other comments? Councilmember Moore?
I just um wanted to mention that I I was scrolling back through old um. Council minutes um while we were having that discussion and I found the November fourth, twenty twenty one uh memo, um, I think from. Uh, Administrator Rola about Title seventeen updates and and there are one, two, three, four, five. In here. So that's what I'm talking about. Like, what are what are the updates on those? My memory is that there were other things that we also talked about, so I don't I don't claim that this is the the exclusive memo for this, but all of these. Code updates that I thought were part of the uh comprehensive plan update, I'd I'd really like to know, you know, where we're at with with this stuff. I know. It has to work its way through the planning commission, whatnot, but you know, if we get a status update on that in January, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Makes sense. Okay, if you guys are all right, we'll continue on with our agenda. I think we're clear on that. Thank you for the input. Uh, five point three, uh, agenda bill memo, if you will, and I think um. Sean and Dean are gonna take us through a. New approach.
So actually, some of what we just experienced, uh. Um, now granted, the the Title seventeen, the parallel processes thing might not have been handled with this, but. What what we'd like to propose uh is a means to handle council agenda items a little bit differently. Um, traditionally, they've been introduced with a memo from staff. And many of us who've worked in other cities and believe that it would be helpful to incorporate a a change to that process. To a a more formal agenda bill to replace those memos. And it would give us something where for all of our items, whether it's a discussion item or some kind of an action item. It gives us a a set form that everybody fills out. And uh, it provides consistency. It. Uh, just makes it easier to understand and consistent and predictable for all of us when we review agenda items. Uh, it is, uh, it puts every item into to the same format so the folks know where to reference quickly. And in the case of when we're talking about comp plan or Title seventeen, it actually has places to link back in the history uh within uh. Within our process and in our different agendas where we have actually touched on the different subjects. And so. Um, initially, this would be a little bit more work for us, for staff. But we're hopeful that the extra work will pay off in some transparency and trust in the long run. Uh, you'll notice that Director Tozer used item ten point one, and this was an early version when it went into this memo, but. He used item ten point one on tonight's agenda to provide a sample. And uh, so Sean, if there's something you'd like to highlight about the the agenda bills, that'd be that'd be great.
No, I mean, I think you really covered all the bases. I mean, the idea honestly is just to is to hopefully streamline things, make things a little bit more efficient. Um, everybody has different style of writing or you know, different ability at writing or format or how they present material. So this. At least instead of having, you know, twelve maybe different individual formats you might see in a staff memo or a report or. Or some other introduced agenda item, um, putting it into a bill format really helps council and the public. Understand any agenda item reasonably quickly. And again, hopefully bring some of that historical context. Um, again, really just trying to standardize things and, and provide a.
So Sean, if a topic had come up in a council meeting. And then we're going to carry it forth and follow up at a different council meeting. What you're saying is that we would have one document here. That would help track the versions and the content. So, you know, here in tonight's meeting, Councilmember Moore. You know, scraped through his notes and said, oh, clear back on, you know, November 4th, 2021. A document would have already pointed us that that was when that was discussed, right?
Yep, exactly. Any of these items as they develop will include that kind of historical running, running tally of what we've been up to. So. And there's, there's a few different ways we can modify it and do it for our purposes, but it could be one agenda bill and then it just is modified, you know. It could stay that number forever. There's a few different ways that we can fine tune it, but again, the idea is that it lives with that item. Through to completion.
So you'd like to propose giving this a go and then making modifications with, with feedback that is given?
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly.
Council, any concerns with that?
No. I appreciate it.
I think it's innovative and it might really help us in the long run. So thank you for, uh, applying past to present. So thank you.
One question, please.
Yes.
Sean, is there an identity to this? Uh, agenda bell, is it, you know, does it get that, an identity, uh, that ties? The different, uh, times this was appeared in agenda together? Or is it just the title, the subject that does that?
It gets in an agenda bill number. A number identifier. So I think this one was 2022 or 22 dash 001, but it'll probably be our first last known link for 2022.
All right. It was, it was in the, where you did it later in the agenda, but it wasn't in this example.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. All right. So we'll, um, be open and hopefully that'll be a nice approach. Um, now we have 5.4, um, which I believe Tom, I think you just wanted to make a statement if I'm. Correct about legal bill discussion.
Yeah, I'll do my best. I'm sorry that my voice is so weak. Um, I, I guess some people in the community have raised a question about whether or not. I bill legal time to council members or staff members on personal issues. And the, the answer to that is I do not. Um, sometimes, um, council members may have. It raise issues that are community wide issues that also affect their own properties. Um, I am bound because it's a community wide issue to provide advice. On the community wide issue. I do not provide specific personal advice. To any council member or any staff member, um, and charge it to the. Well, I don't do it at all and I certainly wouldn't do it and charge it to the city of Clyde Hill. I, I couldn't. I would be conflicted out. I'm, I'm by the rules. A professional responsibility. I'm not allowed to do that.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Um, Councilmember Kamovic.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember More Motor and I spoke about this. I tried to pull something together to shed some more light on this. Um, I thought of the goal of this agenda item, um, and, and Tom, thank you. Like, that was clear and that was great. I'm just going to try to put a finer point on some of the specifics that we've gotten from residents. I think of the goal is to address, um, some misunderstandings in the community regarding city budget reporting. Uh, especially because they're leading to personal attacks. Um, and Councilmember More, feel free to just cut me off and take the mic if I go someplace because you and I have not had a chance to talk about this. Um, specifically, some residents have interpreted the city administrators, uh, report on, um, city. The, the city administrators' report on city attorney billing and city legal spend. Uh, some residents have, uh, interpreted that as indicating that taxpayers paid legal fees for quote. Council's personal agendas and pet projects. Um, this comes from the October 18 council meeting. There is a slide, uh, from the city administrator. That was labeled city attorney analysis, special projects with lots of billing codes. Sorry, lots of billing titles. Um, at the November Budget Advisory Committee Commission meeting. A resident asked whether individual council members engaged the city attorney on personal matters. And just as the city attorney clarified right now, at the time, the mayor clarified that no, city attorney spend was in service of the city. And not anyone's personal use. Um, despite that clear answer then and the clear answer just now. Um, other residents in the interim have continued to ask whether the city spent legal fees in service of quote. Council's personal agendas and pet projects, referring to the slide from the city administrator. Um, here are some of the specifics that they've asked. For example, Councilmember Steve Friedman had the flagpole wrangling in his Aqua Vista HOA. Legal cost taxpayers $12,000 and change. Uh, additionally, the council sought out and voted to hire a new city attorney. Cost to taxpayers $12,900 and change. And so what I wanted to do briefly is address these resident concerns about responsibly spending public funds. Um, and I'm going to look to the administrator and mayor, uh, because this misunderstanding seems to come from people reading their slide. Um, the legal spend related to the flag code. Uh, which was on the slide. Uh, some residents are interpreting that as a personal pet project of Councilmember Freedmans. Do you, uh, think that that's a fair assessment of what that spend was?
That's not a statement I ever made.
I don't recall that statement either.
Great. I'm just, but like, there's, there's a great opportunity to actually listen to residents and adjust their concerns. They were, seemed to be very concerned about that. You're making clear that that was not your intent when you put that slide together and that's not what you think now. And that's good. Um, the decision to hire a new city attorney, a personal pet project of the council or not really?
I will give council credit for raising the question about, um, our contracts. And looking at the opportunity to become best practice. And challenge what was done in the past and bringing it up to kind of current standards. I would not call that a pet project. I would call it that, that is how it was brought forth and then we processed it from there. I had never called it a pet project.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, the last bit and just given the hour, I'm gonna phrase this as, as, uh, as something that we can follow up on and. At the next meeting or maybe even an email. Um, of the legal spend listed, and this goes on to some of the questions that this website and newsletter raised, of the legal spend listed. It seems like some items were required and some of the legal items were in some way discretionary. Um, so for example, change in form of government, uh, the city was obligated to respond to residents. Uh, the city was obligated to respond after residents filed a petition with King County. Neither the administration nor the council had any choice in that legal spend. Um, so to me, that's a great example of required, not in any way discretionary. Uh, on the other hand, rules and guidelines. Uh, the council chose to pursue this work, given the absence of city council bylaws. So that legal spend, I think, is squarely on the five council members for saying, let's go ahead with that. There are, um, uh, seven other line items on here. I think it would be, uh, great. It could just be something that goes by without discussion. For the items on, on that slide, uh, page 87 from the October 18 meeting. Literally just going through and just having a one pager that says this was discretionary and this is whose discretion it was at. Or it was not discretionary, it was required and no one had any choice in it. Does, does that request make sense? I'm really trying to make sure that we're listening to. And addressing concerns of residents because if they don't have confidence in us spending public funds. Then we're gonna have a lot of trouble. That's, that's what all of 5 dot 1 was about. So does the request make sense?
But could you read page 87 of the October, which meeting?
October 18 council meeting, page 87, city attorney analysis, special projects. There are, uh, nine items listed. I addressed two of them. And the, the issue is which were required and which were discretionary. And if they're discretionary, at whose discretion were they? So rules and guidelines, that was, that's all in the council. Change in form of government. That was required. Residents filed a petition. None of us had any choice but to, but to spend $11,500 dealing with that issue. But the other seven, um, I don't want to bias anything. I think it'd be great for these residents who are concerned about this. Um, be able to get a report back. If I, you know, look down the right rail of this, of this. Meeting, I see a bunch of them who've raised this concern. So it'd be great to respond to them. So does the request make sense?
I think so.
Great. Thank you so much.
Further discussion on this? Okay. Um, moving on to 5.5, uh, this is the fire station update and maybe some food for thought for discussion. Whether we do it tonight or we bring it back to January, Sean.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Dean, did you want to introduce or do you just want to jump right in?
Uh, I will, I will shorten what I was going to say to, to simply this. Uh, our, our intent for tonight was to try and have some discussion and update, uh, you on things. I thought the funny thing about this was that, uh, there were, this, this item has come to council. In a variety of fashions throughout the entire year. This would have been a, actually a great one to use this agenda bill on just because we've, we've, uh, starting in April. We've touched on the, the, the fire station a number of times. So really the, the latest news on this is that we have been through the whole RFQ process for an appraiser. Contracted with an appraiser, initiated that process. We jointly met with Bellevue Fire and both appraisers. And, uh, the, we anticipate the appraisals to be done by the end of January. And once staff have the appraisal figures and reviewed all of the first draft documents. We have a development agreement, a temporary construction and right of entry easement, a property exchange agreement, a ground lease. And footing and no build, build easement so far from Bellevue. Uh, once we have those documents reviewed, then we're going to begin the process of. What do we want to ask for? How much do we want to ask for in this bargaining progress, uh, process of, of making this, uh. This, uh, land swap and implementing all the items from the letter of intent. So. Um, we're hoping to have some thoughtful discussion amongst council for some general guidance in this process and take it away, Sean. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll do my best to be brief and, and first thing, this slide was, is not in the packet yet. I'm sure it can be meant to be added. Um, it was something we worked on at the end to help guide and facilitate discussion. So, uh, nothing intended by that, just as far as timelines. Uh, so I think the, the big thing that we're really looking for and it's, you know, we're not coming with an answer, but we really want some guidance on what council's priorities for the community is. When we're doing this, this is a pretty big and unique, um, arrangement, you know, with a complicated property swap and then a leaseback. And then some other property that's impacted. So it's interesting and then also, you know, a vital public service. So. I think for us to understand as we're moving forward and engaging with Bellevue, um, regarding how we value, you know. The property, the land, the opportunity, I think having council's input on that early is, is going to be really important. So we don't go down the wrong route and find out that we negotiate under a wrong set of, of, of priorities. So. Um, we've kind of broken it down into three major components. And again, this is open for conversation and we can finish this conversation at another time. I know it's, it's pretty late. But, uh, the, the three main things that we've identified is, is property security. So, so we know that they're not building anymore real estate in Clyde Hill. Uh, it's a finite amount of stuff available to us and the costs are prohibitive. So giving up physical property. Has a value or a, um, you know, long-term effect on the city forever. You know, you're unlikely to ever get that back. So we can really focus on securing property and property rights for now and forever. Uh, then there's a rental income focus, you know, maximizing the amount of money that we're going to get over the term of the lease, which may be forever. Uh, and then also constructed improvements. So we also may have an interest in, in getting facility improvements on the remaining parcel that benefit the city and its operations. All of those have values. They all need to be weighted. They will all factor into the final negotiation in some way. It's just a matter of how we wait them. And so, um, that's kind of setting the stage for what we're talking about. And the visual interest here, just again, to understand, so. Starting from top to bottom, we have these two big squares here, right? So roughly we're swapping. So we're getting one for one big squares. The, the, that's reasonably even seemingly in, in how it goes. The second part of that is this leased back area. So the property that Bellevue actually needs for parking lot and other improvements. This is the area they intend to lease back on a long, long-term basis. The other portion is, and it's roughly half the property. The other half of that swap property that's ours. Is impacted by the fact that Bellevue's encumbered improvements in space that, that limit its potential for the future. But it's still one contiguous parcel. So, and there's a, a temporary use that, that they'll have there during, during construction. So it has a value for that as well. So the, again, the land is hard to come by in Clyde Hills. So there's a temporary construction lay down and, and operational. Value and use to them during construction of the project, um, that also needs to be valued. So. That's kind of setting the stage for how the property looks and how you kind of break it up into how we value it, but. I've talked enough. We really are looking for your guys' thoughts and discussion. Again, if, if it means that we need to have you guys noodle on it and come back at it later on. Um, you know, we're not sitting down with them next week or the week after, but we wanted to give you guys enough time to think about it and, and make sure we start on.
You had mentioned that there were options to consider. So I'm going to guess that if they were somehow able to get a sense of what all those options are. Then they could be processing that and then we can come together, which I'm assuming Tom, we probably come together in a closed session. Uh, and then we kind of help to discuss and prioritize, uh, kind of what's going to be our position as we do the final negotiations with the fire department. Is that fair, Sean?
Yeah, uh, yeah. I mean, there's a whole bunch of ways we can come at this thing and, and, you know, don't want to. Put too much out there depending on, on where we're going, but.
Right.
Um, I mean, there's a lot of creative things we could do. I mean, we had some good discussions, um, about really trying to secure long-term forever property rights. You know, what if, what if Bellevue decides they don't need a fire station there because everything's in drones, you know? Um, is there a way we can secure the permanent right to that property in some fashion in that way, you know, if it be stops, if they stop firefighting because. Whatever, everything's made out of something else. Um, I mean, I think you guys understand. I mean, this is a long, long-term lease and agreement commitment. And so there's a, a variety of ways we can go it, trying to make sure that our community is supported and that we're gaining the value that, you know, our community deserves out of it.
Okay, uh, Justice Member Kamovic. Um.
I'm mute.
Are you up here? There we go.
You're right. I'm sorry. Um, I wanted to say thank you for making this super complicated thing really straightforward. So we could wrap our heads around it. This is really clear and really awesome. So first and foremost, thank you. The, the pattern I want to suggest here, I look at how effective council members Friedman and Jones were. On the, on the budget work. Um, and obviously I'd love the two of them to do this because they have nothing else going up. The budget's, you know, done it on ice. But the, the concept of, of taking two council members, so that there's not a quorum and they can meet at whatever frequency and come to a recommendation. I want to suggest that might be a good pattern rather than trying to coordinate and, um, her five of us, if that makes sense. I'm not sure what their council members feel about this, but I just want to suggest that as a pattern here. Thank you.
Can I, can I throw out there? I know when we had this, uh, this discussion. Two or three years ago, I don't even remember the exact time this one had, but I know that at least one of the council members, uh, had expressed. For instance, that we didn't, uh, we did not want to sell any more land, right? So, or give away any more land. So that was, uh, some of the impetus for the lease area. Uh, that you see in the yellow, in the yellow rectangle. So I, I mean, that's, that's just some of the kind of general high level theories that, you know, does this council feel the same way about that? Um, because there are certainly other options we could go, uh, if we were looking to go something different than. Than what is, say, in the letter of intent. It's not too late. I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Muramata.
Well, I, you know, and I, and I appreciate Sean and, and Dean for you guys working on this. I think that there's really some interesting. Um, financial implications here. One, and in, in it, having just gone over, um, reviewing the fire station, uh, payment. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if there. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if there is a way, and I'll just put it out there, a way to tie the leaseback area to a percentage of the fire station bill or the fire. Um, uh, the, the fi- the firework bill. So that as they, if, because if they, you know, if, if we're charging, let's say, you know, we'll say we're charging forty dollars a month for the leased area. I'm just gonna and they're charging a hundred dollars and suddenly they decide, oh yeah, the fire is just costing us two hundred dollars and we're still locked in at forty. Um, there is somewhat of, of an inequity going on there. So it would be an interesting. Um, um, I, I guess a way to protect that payment to tie it into the charges that the police, that the, sorry, that the, the fire station builds. Yeah, I was just putting it out there and I don't know legally how you do that.
Those are discussions and such right to, to consider.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. And I, I don't want to get into the negotiations, but I, I think that there's some really interesting things here. So, thank you.
All right. And Tom?
Oh, I, I'd just like to caution you that, um, and when it comes to discussing price you pay and the value of the land, it's better to do that in executive session.
Yep, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I realized that after I started to get into that. I was just talking hypothetically. So, yep, but you know, I, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It has been suggested that two of you were willing to maybe, um, have some thoughtful considerations so that there could be some early, um, uh, thoughts on, uh, preparation broadly. So, uh, maybe you want to speak for that. Tommy, can put your hand down, maybe perhaps. And councilmember Friedman?
Um, I'm always, I'm always prepared to assist if that's what, what the consensus of the council is in of the administration. If they want to put a committee together and it's I'm glad to work with councilmember Jones or anyone else. What, what helps me more is to get, I think, Sean, you brought it up, to get is to get really what you guys think is best, that you can accomplish and what you think should be done for based upon your knowledge of the work you're doing and the work that can be done. I mean, you're, you're closer to this issue and I have a general opinions. I remember some of the conversations we've had and I think you guys remember some of those too. But I'd like to see what you, kind of where you think the negotiations can go and what we should be taught, asking for from your standpoint and trying to serve the community. That helps more if that laundry list is there and then we can build from there. And I think it moves faster that way, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
We're never short of opinions.
Well, and it, you're the one running, doing the work. So, and involved and you have to live with it. So I think that's important.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Nice suggestion.
If Sean and Rich want to pitch in on their feelings on those, feel free. We're not talking dollars.
Okay, councilmember Jones?
Sure. Just wanted to support what councilmember Friedman said. I think you already, and I'm happy to participate with him or uh, whatever, but you, you do have a land, we have a land committee, subcommittee of council members that are dealing with land use items. They might also be a good pair to work on this, but I'm totally willing to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Sean, final thoughts?
Yeah, I, I didn't realize you want my opinion right now or was, was that first, separate meeting? Okay.
Maybe set up the meeting, but it sounds like, I mean, at least two members, whether it's land use or we take up, uh, councilmember Jones or Friedman on a side. Cause, uh, you know, the deadline by which we should be prepared to, um, have some of those discussions and then it would be nice. Executive session so that the rest of council can, um, agree and then we can, uh, know what the marching orders are.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we can come up with a variety of options.
All right. I think we got a game plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, five point six, um, the, the pledge with our solid waste. Uh, lots of stuff going on there as we've been queuing up. You up?
Yeah.
Back?
Oh, here we are. Were you, are we back?
Hmm.
Are you there?
Can you hear?
You're back. Yes.
Glitch in the system. Says the man here.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. So I guess nobody heard my comment, which I will make, I'm glad to make again. I'm sorry that that happened.
Screen?
Yes. For the good of the group, if, if it's their interest, this can easily wait another month. There is not a problem. We're, we're not in a deadline at this point.
All right.
Given the issues, we can move on.
All right. We'll save that and move it on to the January, uh, meeting. You'll have a chance to read that ahead of time. So then it'll make sense once we do that. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda has item six point one, point two, point three, uh, and six point four. Um, oh, is that right? All of those? Yeah, we got the November eight council meetings, fifteenth city council special meeting, November twenty ninth city council meeting. Uh, we're, um, paying the bills for December thirteenth. Uh, the mayor to enter into that renewed agreement with wireless communications and the motion to adopt ordinance nine nine one to get, um, everything aligned. Uh, would you care to make a motion to approve all this consent agenda or move to pull anything out?
So moved.
All of them?
Jones second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then the consent agenda passes. Perfect. Thank you. Um, we'll go down these administrative reports. Just asking those presenting to be concise and pull out that which we need to hear for tonight. Uh, administrator report, Dean Rilla.
Okay, I guess, uh, I hear that it's not letting sharing happening anymore. Uh, so I'll just, uh, throw a couple of things out at you. Uh, the, uh, the code compliance webpage, as I believe councilmember Kamavich mentioned, was updated uh, last week as well as the flowchart. So that's the results of the land use committee and great work from them and Sarah and Rich and Mary and Sean for making this happen. Uh, I believe it is a, a big improvement over the small snippet that we had on there for code compliance that listed just a a few typical items that were uh, typical things that some people might complain about. And, uh, there's a whole process for, for, uh, going through who to contact and, uh, all kinds of things. Let me see if I can make that. Said he couldn't share. Let's see if I can share. Uh, so the, the code compliance website is, or webpage is, is significantly different and there's the whole prevention, education and awareness. And, uh, believe it goes into a lot more detail, how to submit a claim. And again, like I said, the flowchart, which is here, uh, rolls through the results of what the committee worked on together to, uh, try and help to delineate the process. Uh, the only thing we're looking to, uh, update on this is we want to get some versioning perhaps on the bottom of this, but uh, I believe that everybody's done a fabulous job with this and, uh, hope that that is, uh, showing some uh, measure of our commitment to trying to, to make this better. Um, so that was one, one thing I had wanted to point out and just to kind of show off. I also had wanted to, uh, uh, bring up the city hall holiday closures that are coming up in the, over the next few weeks. Uh, and start with this Thursday, uh, a large chunk of our staff are conducting a wellness and team building exercise while we are volunteering at the food lifeline in Seattle. So that's taking place, uh, Thursday, the fifteenth in the afternoon and, uh, the police, public works and administration are all working together to help out the community during this holiday period. Uh, on a local level here, the, the phones will still be staffed as normal, but the, the doors will be closed. And so, uh, folks can make appointments if applicable, but most staff will be at the food lifeline. Uh, most of the rest of the items are included in public works, uh, report later on. And, uh, do folks want to go through the target, uh, priorities? We
One thing, Dean, just to interrupt you. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Please make note in, in the administrator's report, Wednesday, December twenty first, the holiday luncheon and games.
Ah.
Also, all are invited here to, uh, participate.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Do you think of key concerns and the target issues that you need to highlight?
No, the main thing we, we threw in another couple, well, two things. One, and this existing version here, we threw in a black to show when things were completed rather than just kind of dropping them off like was happening in the past. And the big issue is that we're trying to work on a better format for this, for moving forward, uh, into two thousand twenty-three. This is kind of the, and the inherited version. And, and so we want to try and come up with something that that, that works better and is less confusing because this one's a little rough.
Okay. Might ultimately get at with, uh, councilmember Moore had talked about just some ability to kind of know the status of things. So appreciate you looking at that.
Yeah.
All right. And then I do believe they'll just see the official certification of the elections for the proposition one. That was handed to us from the Department of Elections. So that goes officially in the books. All right. Um, anything else? We'll move on to seven point two. Rich, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, it'd be real quick. Uh, last week we met with a new contractor about doing a uh, three lot shore plant in the city. Um, they had two schematic designs that seemed to be, to work and meet our codes. Um, so, but there's going to be more to come on that. Um, ordered a new truck for the building department. That should be in in the next week or two. It's in line to get a spray-on bread liner. Then after that will be delivered. Uh, we got one big, uh, substantial remodel came in since our last council meeting. And that's all I got for now.
All right. And then remember, Rich, um, we wanted to make sure we had uh, because substantial remodel is on our list for potential improvements that we might want to take a, a special look before you just automatically process. Um, so thanks for that.
Yeah, all right. Thanks.
Very good. Okay, I'm going to keep moving us on. Um, Sean, Public Works.
Good evening. Uh, yeah, so just really fast and obviously the report's in there. So you can go through that. Uh, next slide, Dean's controlling things. Sorry, the computer went weird on us. So obviously we got our first taste at winter. So a little bit, a teeny tiny bit of plowing in just one corner of the city. Um, but we did a bit of de-icer. One thing that was kind of strange this year was that Wash Dot was out of de-icer, liquid de-icer, uh, multiple times. So I don't know if they got kind of caught sideways or something weird happened, but it was, it was definitely unusual. Um, but it limited kind of our ability. We just used it judiciously. Um, and we're kind of going to sequence our, our pre-treatment a little differently this coming week because we're expecting some, some more, uh, cold temps coming up and possibilities for snow. So that was interesting. One of the big things is that we did get notified that our TIB funding application was not successful. So that was for our proposed Northeast Twentieth Street sidewalk improvement in two thousand twenty-three. It is one of our tip projects. Um, we'll discuss more about what to do, um, and some options for, for choosing a different project or going a different way. Uh, adopted drain. I know we had one more, uh, adoptee recently, so I think we're up to four now. Uh, so that's exciting. Uh, but again, you're going to continue to see this from us. Uh, it's an easy thing to do and it's kind of, kind of fun. Next slide, please. I don't think there's anything new in, oh, facilities. The city hall looks very handsome. Uh, I think that the crew did a great job of, of lighting things up, but you know, again, we hope that it's, uh, it looks kind of like a peppermint candy cane type thing. Uh, so it's supposed to be festive anyhow. Um, obviously we talked about fire station five and then also working on, um, sequencing public works facilities. So, uh, the parks, and I know I talked to councilmember Friedman briefly, but but he witnessed the, the, the improvement here at the entrance to this park. And this is just kind of not done yet, obviously, but we just cleared out some vegetation. It made a, a big difference in opening up the entry to this, to the Clyde Hill Park. So uh, definitely something we recommend and it's going to continue to improve, especially with the Eagle Scout project. Next slide. The storm system. So Cammons is just about wrapped up on the twenty, on the small drains program work. They finished up change order number two work this week and, uh, happy to say that the road is dry. So that's been a unique condition for us for a, a couple of years now. So it's really nice to see that the road dried and it worked. There was some mystery pipes in the ground, um, naturally that weren't doing much for us unfortunately, but they were in our way. So we had to take those out, but uh, and then we did respond to a, a nuisance flooding issue that was resulted in a couple nine-one-one callouts, um, over the last couple of months. So it was very reminiscent of like the seventeenth situation because it is, it is off-site water running onto another site through pipe conveyance and structures that are unidentified. So not, not identified to be owned by anybody particularly or that they really exist at all. So it was kind of an interesting thing. Luckily for us, we poked around a little bit in the right spots and we popped it open and it was plugged up at the bottom end down a big ravine. And so there was a whole bunch of water and pounded up, uh, up the pipe and that was causing flooding uphill into this, into this residence garage. So it was kind of an interesting deal, but luckily, knock on wood, it appears to be resolved for now. So. Uh, and then streets, again, I talked about liquid de-icing. I won't, I won't beat that up anymore. We did pull out the, uh, the vacuum and you can't see it in there, but I did, we, it's called snuffleupagus or snuffleupagus, depending on how you pronounce it. And I, there is some controversy on the internets about how to do that. So uh, that was interesting. But again, it's a good team activity to suck up those leaves and get them gone. So and I think that's the end of that one.
Thank you so much. You guys have done a lot of work and really appreciative.
Thank you.
All right. The comments or questions, Jeff? Otherwise, um, and we, you have the code compliance reports and the enforcement reports in there. So unless you have a question, those are just available. Here we go. Councilmember Kamavich?
Yeah, sorry. Really quick question on, on this. I couldn't find it on, on this report. I remember councilmember Friedman told me about, uh, some trailer thing in Aqua Vista where there were multiple warnings and extensions and uh, the right thing still didn't happen. And I, I'm trying to figure out where, where we ended up with that. Cause it seemed like a case where the, this report was interesting because it, um, showed the process working and there were warnings and then an NOB. And I, I just couldn't figure out what happened to it.
Sarah, do you want to speak to the status of that?
Well, I'm surprised it's not on the report.
I might have missed it. Sorry.
Uh, well, I'm not exactly sure when it started. I'm so I don't, I don't know what to say if it's not on there because it should be if it was in twenty twenty-two when it started. I'm, but the where we ended up was there was a notice of violation and then there was a warning for fees. And then they incurred fees of like five thousand, I think. And we sent them an invoice.
Okay.
And they did move out of state as well.
Is, is there additional questions?
Yeah, but I believe the folks moved it to Arizona or something, correct?
I think so, but I mean, we weren't told.
Okay, I, I was, I was, I was just curious because I couldn't spot it on here and I remember we're puffling and
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, uh, councilmember Friedman, you, I didn't need to cut you off.
Well, actually I can just you guys are right. They moved and that problem went away. The invoice should go to the owners of the property. They were renters. And the owner should have to pay it. It's the violation on the, from their property. They need to manage their tenant. So.
The way that the code reads, um, it was decided that the owner doesn't actually take care of the fees incurred because it, it's actually the owner of the trailer.
The owner of the trailer.
I mean, we can have further conversation.
That's fine. I don't, we don't need to get into that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we, we understand what you're, what you're saying, council.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, we, we looked into that too. And I think we, we kind of ran into that little bit of roadblock with the way the code was written where it, the, the fee was applicable to the offender rather than the underlying property per se. Uh, if I recall correctly. It's awesome. That's We can fix that.
That's right.
Exactly. We got some, we had our first to-do item on the council for two thousand twenty-three. That's awesome.
There you go.
Okay, uh, councilmember Kamavich, your hands still up? Another question?
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll take that down.
All right, great. Let us move on then to seven point four. Lisa. All right, great. Let us move on then to seven point four. Lisa.
Hi there. I'm also trying to screen share and it I'm not sure if it's working or not because I can't see the screen. So my apologies, there is some glitching here. Okay, well, I'll just wing it. Good evening, everyone. I can't believe we're finally at our last meeting this year. It's very exciting. We ended the month of November with an overall operating surplus of about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Our revenues are about two point nine percent ahead of our budget targets to date. Overall, the city revenues have totaled about six point two million dollars this year and are running about four point seven percent above budget targets. That's thanks to things like restricted revenue sources such as REIT as well as additional sales tax and some investment income. Moving down to our development revenue, two thousand and twenty two has seen, I think, eleven new single family residential permits so far this year. As you can see on the chart, we're doing much better than this time last year. We're only falling about five percent behind budget estimates now. So our building department has been doing great work. As for our REIT, November reported just one home sale with a sale price of about four point two five million. Again, on the chart, you can see that the beginning of the year started with record high home sales. And now we are kind of leveling off and it looks like we're going to come in just slightly above our annual budget targets, not significantly so the way that we started at the beginning of the year. REIT deposits for November were about forty seven thousand compared to last year. We were at about two hundred and twenty eight thousand. Moving on to the next page, our utility taxes are still outperforming our budget. They've consistently stayed about two point eight percent above budget targets. Overall, citywide, the we are about under budget by about five point six percent, so that looks really good for the end of the year. That includes all citywide expenditures, not just our operating expenditures. Our cash and investments are totaled at about thirteen point eight million dollars and our LGIP account is holding just under six point nine million with a net earning rate of three point seven six percent. Our TBI accounts are holding just under six million dollars. Interest income totaled twenty one thousand two hundred ninety five dollars in November as compared to less than nine hundred dollars in November of last year. So big improvements there. Any questions on our November financial statements? I know next month we'll have a much better feel for how the year ends and so we'll have a much more complete report. I do have one additional item, which is that I would like to know if the council has some feedback on the scheduling of an additional meeting in January with our BAC members and staff to continue the work on the ongoing imbalance of our revenues and expenditures for the city of Clyde Hill. We've already reserved some time at the evening of Tuesday, January thirty first. However, an earlier meeting was requested by a council member. So in looking at our available dates, I have some proposals and I'd like to see if these would work for people. Option one is a lunchtime meeting on Thursday, January twelfth. Maybe something that goes from like eleven thirty to one thirty. If we do it at City Hall, we could even provide lunch to people if we would like feedback that way. Option two would be an evening meeting on that Thursday, January twelfth. Trying to kind of stick with the schedule that worked best for most people during the BAC meetings was from six to eight P M. I do want to remind people, we do have a city council meeting that Tuesday evening, so this would be two evening meetings that week if that worked better. Option three is we could also do an afternoon meeting on Friday, January thirteenth. Maybe something like three to five. I know that doing meetings during the day is a little tougher for some people if they have regular work schedules. But I thought I would throw that out there and see if any of those three options are appealing to a majority of council and if that would work for folks.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll I'll speak up. I can do any of those. That's great. And I appreciate it. It was a question I was going to ask, so thank you for doing being ahead of me.
Yep. Is there anyone else that may have an opinion about what they could or could not do?
My preference would be either the evening of the twelfth or the day of the thirteenth, please.
Okay.
Councilmember Jones.
I'm having trouble with my connection here, so I missed the last thirty seconds, but I can make any of the three proposed meeting dates work.
I'm I'm good with all of those.
Okay. Very good.
I think I maybe too, but can you send that around an email?
I can. I apologize. I was going to put it up on the screen, but I'm
No, I understand. Yeah, no, I get it. Just trying to do it without something to look at, look at calendar.
I understand. I'll send it out as an email. I really appreciate the feedback. Thank you very much and happy holidays, everyone.
Thanks, Lisa.
One last finance related item. Don't forget that we have a twenty day open period in January where we still charge things back against two thousand and twenty two. And so also, if in case anybody has any reimbursements they need to have, if they've bought something on behalf of the city and they need to get reimbursed or something like that, we need to have those things in by the second week of of January. So just want to remind folks of that as well.
Thank you. All right, Chief, how about your police report?
Good evening. I think since last council meeting, we get our new hire, Cameron Hanson, got moved up about a month and a half. So he is already gone to the on his way to the academy. He is at the academy currently. He wasn't due to go until the end of January, so that's huge for us. So we'll see him back in about five months hitting the road in his field training. We're on the homestretch for Christmas. We have not had a porch pirate incident yet, so keep reminding your neighbors and watching out for them too for packages on porches and whatnot. So that's all I have for tonight.
Appreciate it. You guys stay with all your good training, so appreciate that we have a workforce all nice and competent and trained skill. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mary, what would you like to share for seven point six?
Yes, hello, Mayor and Council. At the last regular meeting, council authorized the the mayor to sign a contract with Katie Berger to manage and respond to public records request for City Hall. So she has started to work on both new and backlogged requests. And she should be in touch with all requesters with open requests soon to provide either an update or installment of records. And as a reminder, Ellie is continuing to manage and respond to public records requests for the police department. And then in the packet, there is also a list of requests that are currently open and those that were closed between November first and December eighth.
Great. Thank you for that. All right, any further questions for section seven, Councilmember Komovich?
Yeah, super briefly, a question for Tom. A group of residents articulated some frustration and anger around quote, now we are being told Lighthouse Law Group and or Tom Brubaker, the city attorney, want to redact legal bills. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they seem to be making up stories around their public records requests for legal bills and the seemingly new policy to redact them. And in the spirit of trying to actually listen to residents and address their issues, I thought it might be helpful to ask you that in a public meeting. I'm not trying to change the policy. I'm just trying to make sure the public has clarity around the why rather than making up stories.
Well, it's it's my understanding that the city was in the habit of disclosing legal bills unredacted. Up until a few months ago, it came to, we changed legal counsel, the city did as of about January first, two thousand twenty two, and then again April, when Lighthouse Law Group, my firm, came on board. When I became aware that that was the city's practice, we changed our approach because we feel we're legally bound under the rules of professional responsibility and to protect attorney client privilege to redact some substantive aspects as well as names of certain persons in order to maintain our client confidentiality. This is done typically in all cities as far as I know. And we're now on board doing the same thing. So it was my recommendation and decision that we start doing that.
Okay, thank you. That's super clear. It makes sense. I just wanted to make sure we can get that out out to the public. Thank you so much. And we'll lower my hand.
All right. Okay, so let's move on. We have nothing for eight, nothing for section nine. Now we're under ten seeking a motion to approve this agenda bill, now that you know what we're talking about. Twenty two point oh one, awarding a contract to Excel Pacific, Inc. for the city hall expansion and remodel project. Sean, anything further there? And then we can see we can go into getting a motion.
Just recommending contract award. You can see we also recommended for a little bit above the base amount. Just a lot for or allow for some contingencies and some additional improvements that weren't included in the original bid due to kind of concerns related to costs, so.
Right, Councilmember Komovich.
Really short question for Sean. Residents have asked me what's included in this and I know that there is a better connectivity for meetings in hybrid form. That would be I couldn't find a clean write up of here's what is in the is in the project, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. So highlights are there's like a brand new office. It's enclosed. The the vault area that has a lot of our files gets converted into another office. Their front counter gets replaced, so there's some kind of creature comfort and just organizational stuff. There's some ADA widening new door, so the administrator's office gets closed in by about two feet to make room for a door. So just a whole bunch of variety to accommodate staff and new offices. In the council chambers, something that's a little bit more exciting is a lot of audio visual, so new projector, new what's the right, like a hearing accessible, so there's some audio aid and and sound system as well. So better teleconferencing abilities, better camera, you know, movement around for when one day, you know, we maybe we were back here in the council chamber. So we can also update our project page with the the plans. They are a little hard to discern exactly what's going on, but it is a general improvement across the boards, new carpet, new paint on everywhere. So just general update and improvement.
Thank you so much. That's great.
All right. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Muramoto.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Give that passage unanimously. Appreciate that. In our reports coming down in section eleven, I can say that we're just continuing with our relationship across the points. I think the comment at the beginning from one of our residents kind of points to the fact that we do try amongst Yarra Point, Hunts Point, Medina to kind of really stay connected on Polacks as well, stay connected. We are making sure our five twenty plan is secured even with some changes in some key players and that we are ready to remobilize if we need to. So there's nothing further, I think, on the points mayor's meeting with that. Let me go to East Side Transportation E T P, Councilmember Muramoto.
Yeah, just a just a couple of things. I we I did not vote on the legislative agendas because I didn't get council approval. You know, there's not a lot of super substance there. I would just, you know, council, please take a look and read it. And Chief, I have a question for you regarding the virtual coordination center. My understanding is there was a at one point in time, NORCOM was going to be involved in this. It sounds like an interesting. It's like a cloud based coordination center for statewide, all getting all agencies together. And and it wasn't clear to me why NORCOM wouldn't be involved in that. I mean, I I know that NORCOM is is super tactical and and maybe in in terms of nine one one services and some other things. And so maybe that's outside of the NORCOM purview, but it I I would ask you to take a look at this and and maybe just let me know why or why not NORCOM wouldn't be involved. It seems like it'd be a good idea and council, I would just take a look at it. It's kind of an interesting thing that's coming to fruition, which basically talks about a regional coordination center for they they quote the the tanker that overturned on I five that created major grid locks. And it's basically just a coordination effort between various departments and so forth in terms of, you know, how how they're responding and make sure they're coordinated. So it's it's actually kind of an interesting proposal or or initiative that's coming from from the state.
Good job. Thank you for representing. Yeah, there was a it was a pretty thick packet.
Yeah.
So yeah.
It was.
Appreciate those topics. Okay, eleven point three SDA pick had its annual meeting. I included all the content in there. The only thing directly affecting our city is and everybody had increases based on our volumes. Our dues will go up to a hundred and forty four dollars and forty eight cents. We did meet in person. That felt really energizing and we did meet with our new SCA director. And he's going to really be a good leader for us, so we're in good hands. Councilmember Friedman, did you have anything from your SCA?
The meeting was canceled.
Okay.
So we did not meet this month.
Okay.
So we'll deal with the plus next month and that'll be maybe I'll have an update. Thanks.
Okay, and anything from Mizwak? Other than next month stuff, okay.
That's it.
That's all right. We got we got the content coming. And Councilmember Muramoto, anything for your railway?
And not not of immediate concern, no.
Okay, Councilmember Jones.
I have nothing to report on NORCOM.
Okay. E M A C, the meeting is tomorrow. It's the last one for the year. They're basically setting up for new chair and vice chair and they continue to talk about some of the drill planning that will go into next year. All right. Let me see here. The only thing that has changed, I believe, then moving into section twelve is in two point twelve point one, excuse me, just dropping in some council policy work priorities for two thousand twenty three. I'm not sure if somebody wanted to speak to that.
Um, I'll 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 speak to that. This was just my quick survey of the last year and what emerged organically and some of the things that I know we've talked about and then other things that we might want to do. And basically, this is a this event is a snapshot to for discussion, obviously not tonight. If there's someone who is interested in this in any way, please send me a piece of email. I'd love to refine it with someone and bring it in January so that we can have a a work plan for council that meshes well with and works well with the budget and the work plan that we we approved a few weeks ago. Does that does that make sense? Oh.
Yeah.
All right, so if anyone's interested, please, please send an email. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anything of urgent issue that we must make sure we talk? Seeing that, then I will tell us at nine twenty nine, we will be adjourned and hope to see anyone's that are able to join us in the council at our holiday party. Thank you all. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thanks.
Happy holidays.